Good evening and thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Aubreyanna, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Mangum?
Here.
Mansfield?
Here.
Nichols?
Here.
Paulson?
Here.
Blad?
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which, if you'd remain standing, for an invocation which will be offered by Mary Ann Forrest, representing HS Joshua Ministry. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting me. Precious Father God in heaven, we just lift up this time to you and it is such an honor to be able to come here before you tonight. I lift up our precious community, Lord, and you know the broken hearts, you know the grieving, you know the circumstances, you know everything. We lift these needs up to you tonight. I lift up each one of our community members, and I ask, Lord, that you will reach down into the depths of their hearts and their souls, and you are the only one that can heal them through these times. Father, we just ask for the leading and the guiding of the Holy Spirit through each one of our community leaders who have authority over this town. We just ask that you will allow what's necessary for your will to be done. We lift up this community, Father, to you. We give you the praise, the glory, and the honor. I lift up each one of these individuals in this room, their families, their friends and loved ones, and I just ask for Psalms 91 hedge of protection to be around them. And I ask that you will just lead and guide all of us as we try to come together through these times according to your will, Lord, in unity, being able to still love and still pay forward. Father, I just lift everyone up that's been affected by the tragedy. I just lift up this community for strength, and I lift up our fearless leaders, Father, and ask that your will be done. In Jesus' mighty, precious name, we ask these things. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you very much. We will move to Agenda Item Number Three as the Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes for the following meetings: Work Session Meeting of March 13, 2025; Clarification and Regular City Council Meetings of March 20, 2025; and Special City Council Meeting of April 10, 2025. B. Material Claims. Council may wish to approve the material claims for the period of April 1 through 15, 2025. C. BID Management Agreement, Historic Downtown Pocatello Incorporated. Council may wish to approve a renewal of the management agreement with Historic Downtown Pocatello, Inc., subject to legal department review. The administrator and manager manage the operation of the Business Improvement District, BID. Council may also wish to acknowledge that they have reviewed the employment agreement of Stephanie Pelagi with Historic Downtown Pocatello, Inc., as provided for in the management agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of the Consent Agenda Items B and C as listed in Agenda Item Three.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council Member Cheatham and a second by Council Member Mansfield. Aubreyanna, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes. Thank you. I would entertain a motion for Agenda 3A.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve Consent Agenda Item A in Agenda Item Number Three.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I explain?
Absolutely.
I was not here and available for the work session on March 13th, therefore I'm not going to vote to approve the minutes, and since they're all lumped together, I'm going to vote against this item.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Council Member Paulson. Aubreyanna, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes. Thank you. We'll move to Agenda Item Four, Proclamations. We have three proclamations tonight. The first proclamation will be Earth Day will be read by Council Member Mansfield. The second proclamation will be Idaho Gives Week will be Council Member Lurick or Council President Lurick, and the third one will be the Month of the Military Child, which will be Council Member Cheatham. Council Member Mansfield?
Whereas, a sound natural environment is the foundation of a healthy society and a robust economy, and whereas human activities around the world are causing climate change that threatens human health and our planet's ability to sustain a diverse community of life, and whereas local communities can do much to slow down the effects of climate change and contribute to building a healthy society by addressing issues such as energy use, transportation, personal habits, and consumption, and whereas Earth Day is a time to celebrate the goal of inspiring environmental awareness and encouraging the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our natural resources. Now therefore, I Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2025, to be Earth Day in Pocatello, and I encourage our residents, businesses, and institutions to make a commitment to undertake programs and projects that enhance our community's natural environment by reducing the city's carbon footprint and help build a sustainable community.
So is it going to take place this year?
Yeah, here. If you'd like to say a word or two, you're welcome.
Just want to thank you for your continued support for environmental awareness and just make sure that everybody knows that the Environmental Fair is Saturday, April 26th, not this Saturday, next Saturday, and it's a free event for all the families and there's a lot of fun activities.
Thank you.
First of all, excuse me for my voice. Whereas nonprofit organizations help build and sustain healthy communities in our state and enhance the quality of life for Idahoans and others throughout the country and world, and whereas over 7,000 charitable nonprofit organizations based in Idaho contribute significantly to our economy by providing services to our communities, employing over 79,000 Idahoans and producing total revenue of over $10.3 billion, and whereas Idaho's nonprofit leaders are often entrepreneurs, create solutions to problems, and fill previously unmet needs in the areas of health, recreation, education, research, arts, social services, and more, and whereas Idaho Gives Week serves as a time for Idahoans to join together with one voice on one day to contribute to and amplify the efforts of Idaho nonprofit organizations, and whereas the nonprofit sector acts as a responsible steward of charitable dollars to achieve a diverse range of missions and goals, and whereas nonprofit organizations often fulfill their missions by advocating on behalf of those who cannot advocate for themselves. Now therefore, I Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the week of April 28 through May 1, 2025, to be Idaho Gives Week in Pocatello, and encourage all citizens to recognize and support the many nonprofit organizations in our community.
Thank you. Yeah. Absolutely. Thank you. You're welcome to say a few words if you'd like to.
I would just like to share that last year through Idaho Gives, 13,621 people in the state of Idaho gave $4.3 million to nonprofit organizations. That's huge, and we encourage people to get out and give during Idaho Gives because nonprofit contributes greatly to our society in Idaho.
First, thank you for the proclamation today. I've got to admit, I spent a career working in nonprofit organizations or supporting nonprofit organizations, and I'm on the Idaho Community Foundation Board. Nothing enriches our communities more than the work of our nonprofits, and Idaho Gives is a day where each one of us can help a little bit for any nonprofit in which we're interested, to help our communities grow together, be better, and help folks who don't always have a voice for themselves. So thank you for the proclamation. Encourage your support for Idaho Gives, and let's make Idaho a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Before we do anything, if Stephen and Mary, if you'd please introduce yourselves so the people at home watching might know.
My name is Stephen Weg. I'm a board member of the Idaho Community Foundation and a late-time Idaho resident.
I'm Mary Wagner, and I'm the retired school superintendent, and I'm a board member on the Idaho Community Foundation Board, and I too have lived in Pocatello for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you.
City of Pocatello Proclamation. Whereas April is designated by the U.S. Department of Defense as the Month of the Military Child, an opportunity to recognize military children for their resilient spirits, personal sacrifices, strong character, and courage, and whereas military children are part of the strength of our nation as they support and encourage their service members with a fierce patriotic spirit, and whereas these children are a source of pride for the great state of Idaho and to us all, and it is only fitting that we take time to recognize their contributions, and whereas a month-long salute will recognize that military children serve as well, and citizens of Idaho will have the opportunity to wear purple every Friday in April in support of these children. Now therefore, I Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim April 2025 to be Month of the Military Child in Pocatello, and encourage the community to celebrate military children and the unique sacrifices and contributions they make.
She's taking the picture again.
I guess so.
If you'd like to say a few words, you're welcome to do that.
I would just like to say thank you for recognizing Month of the Military Child. I am Kirsten Young. I am the alternate state representative for the Idaho Military and Youth Program. So this is a really big deal. Thank you so much for this. I would just like to say for those who are in the military who have children, this program, the Military and Youth Program, is an amazing opportunity for them to get together with other children who also have parents in the military, who understand the sacrifices and how difficult it can be. It's a wonderful program for them to be able to get together and realize that they are not alone in this struggle, and so I would just encourage those of you who have children and who are in the military to get involved with this program. It's an amazing one to get involved with. Thank you.
Thank you. Super. Thank you very much. We will move to Agenda Item Five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. May 1, 5:30 p.m. will be a clarification meeting. 6 p.m. will be a regular city council meeting. May 8, 9 a.m. will be a city council work session. Other events, applications for council seat number four are now being accepted. Applications must be received at the mayor's office by 5 p.m. on Wednesday, April 30. Per Idaho law, interested individuals must be registered voters of the City of Pocatello and be at least 18 years of age. Annual spring cleanup at city cemetery is underway. Crews will remove and discard all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations, et cetera. They have placed on cemetery space if they wish to avoid disposal of the item by staff. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. Zoo Idaho is open weekends only. Beginning May 3, Zoo Idaho will be opened every day. Compost happens program, April 1 through the last full week of November. Yard waste carts will be picked up the same day as your regular collection day. April 19, 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, MIAC. Essential Needs Drive at the Community Recreation Center, 144 Wilson. Personal products donations will be donated to area agencies. 10:30 a.m. at April 19, 10:30 a.m., 28th Annual Run With the Big Dogs at Lower Ross Park. Register online or at the animal shelter. April 25, City's Annual Hiring Fair from 2 p.m. to 7 p.m. at the Public Works Annex, 2405 Garrettway. April 26, Portinavale Environmental Fair will be held at Lookout Point from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. Citizens using the PRT fixed route or special services during the environmental fair may ride to and from the Lookout Point for free. On April 26, Medicine Take Back Day at the Pocatello Police Department. Law enforcement personnel will be on hand to take back and safely dispose of unwanted medicines to keep them out of the water supply. That medicine takeout will be right over here at the police department. So if you would like to get the medicine take back, participate in that. Looking ahead, dog licenses expire June 1. Beginning May 1, the city is offering half-priced dog licenses through the month of May. Licenses may be purchased at City Hall or at the animal shelter. Did I say that we pulled seven? Well, I'm just going to say it again then if I can. We have Agenda Item Number Seven. If you are here for Agenda Item Number Seven, that has been pulled from the agenda, so it will not be heard at this time tonight. We'll move to Agenda Item Number Six. Public hearing postponed, or Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearing, Proposed Fiscal Year 2025 Sanitation Fee Amendment and Resolution. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a proposed mid-year fee change amending Exhibit S sanitation department fees for the city's fee schedule for sanitation services for fiscal year 2025. Council may wish to adopt the proposed amendment by resolution. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Kirkman, Director of Public Services. Tonight before you is one of the first steps we need to take to establish our commercial cardboard program. This is something that was a high goal, a high priority for the council. We've talked about it quite a bit. So what we are doing today is the first step of getting the fees put in place. All of the existing fees within the sanitation department as it pertains to garbage are not changing. We are merely adding fees to cover the costs of picking up cardboard and single stream.
Okay. Just a minute. Any questions for Tom while he's up there right now? Okay. Thank you, Tom. Tom, before you leave, have we received any correspondence in your office that the council has not seen?
No, sir.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, have we received any correspondence in your office?
No correspondence.
Okay, thank you. Then we would look for any testimony supporting the application.
And also, same time.
We would look for any testimony uncommitted to the application. We would look for any testimony opposed to the application.
Thank you. Nikki Taisom, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho 83201. I'm opposed for several different things. One, it's not the government's job to be in not only the garbage business but the recycle business, and now that we're going to have even more fees and expenses going to provide that, and the same contractors getting the job. I'm all about recycling. I'm about, let's get back to America and getting our earth back in order where we're supposed to be and our families, united and indivisible, with life, liberty, health, happiness, peace, and prosperity, not just life and liberty, I mean liberty and justice, but life, health, happiness, peace, prosperity for all, creation, as stewards of each other on this earth. There's people, like I've said multiple times, can't even afford to place deliver food to eat. We have some grief going on right now in this town, and not just Victor. Some serious things going on in this town. Not enough effort was made to get somebody private to do this job. It's not your job to be in the garbage and recycle business, or the property development, or the recreation. Your job is to uphold, obey, and defend our constitution as a Christian constitutional republic that we just said a Pledge of Allegiance to be in due, and our Declaration of Independence that declares it. Since 1776, in our preamble, "We, the people of the United States," which Idaho is one of, "In order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity, and ordain and establish the Constitution as," I emphasize, "the supreme law of this land." That's the fourth and sixth articles also in our Constitution. "We, the people, have sovereignty, united and indivisible, your public servants. We help keep each other in check so we wouldn't have these issues going on in our town, our county, our state, and nation, and globally. We have children trafficked globally out of this town. Honor peace, goodwill toward all creation." That was spoken by angels at the Savior's birth, who said not to offend or turn away a little child. We've been given great blessings of being born in America. We've been given the Constitution as the supreme law of this land. Take from God's just and holy laws, and our God is our Father and Mother in Heaven and Savior, three gods. We were blessed as an American nation under them. We used to be Little House on the Prairie, not Saudi Arabia and Babylon and Nazi Germany. Any of this should not be going on. Honor peace, goodwill toward all creation. We don't cross the line in the name of Jesus."
Thank you. Any other opposed? And I might just remind everybody to speak at the topic at hand. Any others opposed? Okay, Tom, I do have a question for you. If you would come back up here. There was an accusation that we did not do any enough effort to have a private party do this. A private party was doing it and left. Would you just explain that to us a little bit?
Yeah. Just a little reminder of the timelines and what had happened. It was never our intention at all to get into this, into the recycling processing part of this. There was two private contractors that were doing this. We were merely hauling our single stream, which is our curbside recycling to the facility. Western Recycling was the first one. They decided that it didn't fit in their business model, so they were going to shut it down, and so Republic Services, who is the second-largest hauler in the nation, purchased the facility. Within three months, they said that they don't want to continue operating the facility, and so we were approached, and basically we were given 30 days' notice that we had to cease and desist our recycling program. And so that's what drove this decision moving forward.
Super. Councilmember Mangum?
There's also a comment made that kind of leaned towards the detriment fee cost-wise on the city. Can you talk about how we've alleviated some of that cost from us doing the recycling in-house?
Yeah. So like I said, we never thought we'd get in this business. It was kind of thrust upon us, but what we quickly learned was recycling, single stream, which is the stuff that's in your blue carts out front of your house, that is very expensive. You have to pay to have it sorted, and there's a lot of processes to go with it. But what we soon found out is that cardboard is actually very, I don't want to say profitable, but it's less of a lose. And so we learned that if we get more cardboard coming into the facility, it helps offset that cost of that single stream. We have, we've historically had about a $400,000 budget for recycling per year, and currently we're going at about $20,000 last month. So it's been a fairly substantial decrease in the costs.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Cheatham?
Could you recount for the audience the participation in the City of Pocatello?
Yes. So part of the decision that the council, the mayor and the council, as well as us, had made is the EPA's national average is about 35%, I believe, participation rate, which means 35% of the population is participating in curbside recycling. They have a goal for 2030 to be at 50%. The City of Pocatello is currently at 77% participation, so we are the gold standard of curbside recycling. We felt that it was very passionate to the community. We felt that this was a service that they wanted, and that's why we move forward.
Super. Perfect. Thank you. Sounds to me like we saved money and we had private entities doing it, and they backed out.
Yes, sir.
Super. Thank you. Okay, I wish that...
Pardon? May I ask a question?
No, ma'am. I'm sorry. You can't right now.
Oh, it was in regards to the topic?
You can visit with him in a minute. He's right back there behind you. I declare that public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Go ahead.
I move that we approve the Agenda Item Number Six, the Proposed Fiscal Year 2025 Sanitation Fee Amendment and Resolution.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Lurick and a second by Council Member Cheatham. Aubreyanna, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. As a reminder, Agenda Item Seven has been pulled, so we'll jump to Agenda Item Eight. Agenda Item Eight, Final Plaid Application, Aspen Grove Subdivision. Council may wish to approve a final plaid application submitted by Gate City Builders, represented by Sunrise Engineering, to subdivide four parcels encompassing 5.56 acres, more or less, into nine lots. The property is located at 2806 South Fifth Avenue and will be known as Aspen Grove Subdivision. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the final plaid following a public hearing held January 8, 2025. Staff recommends approval of the plaid with conditions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for approval of the final plaid application, Aspen Grove Subdivision, as outlined in Agenda Item Eight with applicable conditions.
Second. I'm guessing. I don't know who got that first, but I have a motion by Council Member Mansfield and a second by Council Member Paulson. Aubreyanna, could you please call the roll?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Nine, Grant Application Ratification, U.S. Department of Transportation Rural and Tribal Assistance, RTA Pilot Program. Council may wish to approve a request to ratify a grant application through the U.S. Department of Transportation Rural and Tribal Assistance, RTA Pilot Program in the amount of $500,000, and if awarded, authorize acceptance of the grant, authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. The grant would provide necessary funding for completion of a municipal services impact analysis. There is no required match.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the request to ratify the grant application for the U.S. Department of Transportation Rural and Tribal Assistance Pilot Program, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council Member Mangum and a second by Council Member Mansfield. Aubreyanna, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 10, American World War II Heritage City Nomination Application. Council may wish to approve submission of the American World War II Heritage City Nomination Application to the National Park Service and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review. This designation recognizes the contributions of one jurisdiction in each state regarding U.S. involvement in World War II.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve Agenda Item Number 10, the American World War II Heritage City Nomination Application. And after we get a second, good. Now we have a second, and after we vote, I'd like to hear from staff about what this is about.
Why don't we hear from staff and then vote?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Becky Bab, I'm the planning... Becky Bab, I'm the Planning Manager of the city of Pocatello. Our staff has put together this application to the National Parks Service for this designation as a World War II Heritage City. Our state is one of the states that does not have a designation of this World War II Heritage City designation. The application has two criteria. I'm just going to read them so that I don't mess them up. One is that the contribution by a city and its endurance to the World War II homefront war effort, that could include adaptations to wartime survival, civil defense, preparedness, et cetera, and the other was achievements by the city to preserve their heritage and legacy. And so this application has been put together. It demonstrates the ways that the city of Pocatello contributed to the World War II efforts, which includes that our Army Air Force had, our Air Force had an Army base located at what is now the Pocatello Airport, that we had the naval ordinance plant, which was producing a number of wartime effort contributions, that we provided opportunities for recreation and education to our armed forces who were stationed here, and then the number of contributions that we've made to honoring our World War II legacy. This application does not have any financial commitment from the city, and it will not restrict our opportunity to do anything, but it will provide this designation that may help with our education and outreach as we try to demonstrate some of our history and our World War II contributions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Becky, is there any memorialization of this planned anywhere, any kind of a monument or something, either at the airport or in town, or both?
There's a number of monuments, yes, and kind of spread across. If you look through that application, it demonstrates where our different memorials are, at the Memorial Center, and the offices, I'm sorry, the acronym just escaped me. But yes, if you go through all the pictures in the application that have been provided, we have a number of those. This won't have a formal monument, per se, but if we were to receive this, we would definitely do some outreach with the community and demonstrate our acceptance of the designation and work towards memorializing it formally.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick comment. As a historian, I like to see our history preserved, so I appreciate all the work that went into this application. I think it's an excellent application, and I hope we're successful. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Becky.
Thanks.
So we have a motion by Council President Lurick, and a second by Councilmember Mansfield. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Eleven, Surplus and Sell of Seized Assets, Police Department. Council may wish to approve the following request from the Pocatello Police Department, subject to legal department review. A, declare three vehicles as surplus, which were seized during ongoing investigations. The vehicles have been adjudicated and awarded to the police department by the Bennett County Prosecutor's Office in accordance with asset forfeiture laws, and B, authorize the sale of the vehicles through auction, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for approval of the declaration of the surplus assets and authorize the auction of the sale of the vehicles through auction, authorizing your signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, yes.
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
So one of the items for, on this Agenda item, is a 2003 Selica. And when that was seized, it was seized along with $261 in cash, looks like 16 grams of cocaine, and 1,883 grams of meth. And if you do the conversion on that, that's 66 ounces or 5.5 pounds of meth. So I'd just like to applaud the Pocatello Police Department for keeping that off the street.
That's great, good deal. Thank you. We've got a motion by Councilmember Mansfield, and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Twelve, Professional Services Agreement Davie Resource Group. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve a professional services agreement with Davie Resource Group, in the amount of $175,000, to develop an urban forest plan and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review. The project is funded by a U.S. Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Grant.
Mayor?
Yes.
I motion to approve Agenda Item Number Twelve, the Professional Services Agreement with the Davie Resource Group, for $175,000, and authorize the mayor's signature on all pertinent documents, subject to legal department review.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Paulson, and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Paulson?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Thirteen, Local Professional Services Agreement Mona Vista to Pocatello Creek Road Pathway Project, Keller Associates Incorporated. Council may wish to approve a local professional services agreement between the city of Pocatello and local highway technical advisory council, LTAC, and Keller Associates Incorporated, for construction inspection services in for the Mona Vista to Pocatello Creek Road Pathway Project, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review. There is no additional financial requirement or match for this project. The full match for the grant is covered by the local nonprofit organization.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the local professional services agreement for Mona Vista to Pocatello Creek Road Pathway Project with Keller and Associates, Inc., as outlined in Agenda Item Number Twelve.
I think it was Thirteen.
Item Thirteen.
Sorry, Thirteen.
Second.
Thank you. We already did Twelve, huh? We have a motion by Council President Lurick, and a second by Councilmember Mansfield. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fourteen, Construction Management Services Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for Recycling Facility Remodel Sanitation Services. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and approve a guaranteed maximum price amendment to the previously awarded contract for construction management services for the partial remodel of the city's recycling facility, in the amount not to exceed $646,642, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review. Funding for the project has been budgeted in the FY25 sanitation services budget. Mr. Mayor? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the Construction Management Services Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for the recycling facility remodel and the sanitation services, and approve your signature on all applicable documents, subject to legal department review.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham, and a second by Councilmember Nichols.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, could we have Mr. Kirkman come up and chat with us about this?
He would love to.
Tom Kirkman, Director of Public Services.
Mr. Mayor, could we have Mr. Kirkman describe what we're going to do at the sanitation facility that we're going to be remodeling?
Sure.
Absolutely. So, the recycling facility that we purchased is in pretty rough shape. One of the big things that we want to be able to do is help create a better interface with the public. So this, part of this, or this money's going to go towards making a more friendly environment for customers to come, drop-off products. We have a full array of drop-off bins for cardboard, aluminum, all sorts of things. It's going to help do some facade work to fix some of the dilapidation on the building.
I may make a comment?
Absolutely.
I toured this facility when Tom was there a few months ago, and took a tour of the building, and had the opportunity, it was warm enough weather, we raised the exterior door, and watched people use the facility. And as I said in a prior meeting, it absolutely amazed me how innovated people seem to be at the ability to bring all kinds of stuff, from their cars and trucks, and drop it off there. This facility is available enough to people that I think we can encourage an even greater rate of recycling. The interior of the facility is in pretty sad shape. It's obviously, it hasn't seen maintenance for a very long time. The structure seems to be sound, but it needs to be cleaned up and made more usable for office space and managing this cardboard facility that we're talking about. This is a good project.
Yep, super. Any other comments? Thank you, Tom. So we have a motion by Councilmember Cheatham, and a second by Councilmember Nichols. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Fifteen, Bid Acceptance Contract Award for North Main Extension Sewer Project, Vortex Services Incorporated LLC. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the bid for the North Main Extension Sewer Project to Vortex Services LLC, in the amount of $428,995, and authorize the mayor's signature on all applicable documents, including change orders up to 5% of the project total, subject to legal department review. Funding for the project has been budgeted in the FY25 Water Pollution Control WPC budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to accept the bid for Vortex Services for the North Main Extension Sewer Project, in the amount of $428,995, authorizing your signature on all applicable documents, including change orders up to 5% of the project total, subject to legal department review.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield, and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Sixteen, Resolution Dissolving Childcare Advisory Committee. Council may wish to adopt a resolution dissolving the Childcare Advisory Committee and expressing appreciation to the members for their service.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Reluctantly, because I feel like it's a travesty that this, we're having to do this, but I would move that we approve the resolution of dissolving the Childcare Advisory Committee.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mangum, and a second by Mansfield. Before we vote, though, Hayden has asked if he could say a thing or two.
Yeah, to every legislator that voted for this, this is a matter of when, not if. Children are going to be abused or neglected at best. So I would like to thank the Pocatello Fire Department, Mallory Bascom, the Health Department, Idaho Stars, United Way, and all of our childcare providers, who met on public record to try to keep Pocatello's children safe.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Councilmember Mangum, and a second by Councilmember Mansfield. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
No.
Thank you. Agenda Item Seventeen, An Ordnance Repelling Title 5.28, Childcare Effective, April 18, 2025, as a result of the Idaho State Legislature Preemption of Local Control. Council, how do you wish the ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance, Agenda Item Number Seventeen, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Mansfield, and a second by Councilmember Mangum. Aubrianna, could you please call the roll?
Mansfield?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, repelling Chapter 5.28 Childcare of the Revised and Compiled Ordinances of the City of Pocatello, 1983, and providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication, according to law.
Thank you. I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance, if the ordinance shall pass.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Mangum?
Yes.
Mansfield?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Paulson?
No.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll move to Agenda Item Eighteen. Give me one second, please. I think with all of these, we're going to make this two minutes. Is that okay? I think that I would like, if we can, with the people, sort of, as many as possible, make it a two-minute, closer to three-minute. Can I do that?
Yeah, it's a rule that you can, if you just explain the...
Okay, all right. Yes, okay. Thank you. Agenda Item Eighteen, Items from the Audience. This time has been set aside to hear items from the audience, not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. We have a total amount of time of 15 minutes for this, this agenda item. It says in our agenda, three minutes per person. I'm going to adjust that, because we have a number of people that would like to speak, and we would like to hear as many as we possibly can. And so I'm going to adjust it from a three-minute to two minutes per person. And hopefully, that will be okay with everybody. We just want to hear as many people as we possibly can. And so with that, we will go ahead and get started. Nikki Tason. So can you get that? Hold on, just one minute. Sorry about that, I'm throwing curveballs up here, but we do want to hear as many people speak as we can. Okay, two minutes. Okay, Nikki Tason.
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. I mentioned earlier that we have a lot of grieving in this town. The First Amendment declares, "Everybody in this nation has the free exercise of their religion, the freedom to peaceful, ethereal, freedom of speech, freedom of press, freedom for redress of grievances." They were totally obliterated. I've been coming before you for a long, long time. We have not one child safe in this town. And I can tell you, we've got girls and women, including in the jails, being used for baby machines, and those babies stolen and taken and trafficked out of here. We've got children and others being trafficked in your tunnels, in your bars, in your window motels, in the hookah bars, in and out of school and daycare. We've got children who are homeless in this town. We have a right to redress the grievances, and none of our freedom of speech is to be a bridge. That means to shut, either shorten or stop. You're here to serve us, not limit our freedom of speech and redress of grievances. You're here until we've all been heard. You're the servants, we're the sovereignty. We have some huge issues in this town. You're gonna limit us to two minutes? You've gotta be kidding me. I've watched part of the videos. I have grandchildren in family myself who are under nonstop terrorism for being true and falsely accused. I just spent over two months in that godforsaken jail, watching people be beat up and denied every due process, right? I watch girls, and I hear girls screaming outside by the guard station because they're being trafficked around the jail. I love everybody, and I have enough love to say, this is evil. Give us more than what we need. More than two minutes is not right. It's a disgrace, especially after you just, just honored World War II veterans. You gave them all for us to have that right to speak, under any condition, reverently, peacefully, respectfully, as a nation under our gods, our Father, Mother in Heaven, and Savior.
Thank you. Thank you.
In the name of Jesus.
Kyler Johnson.
Do your job, or quit. Move to little crane.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Pocatello City Council members. My name is Kyler Johnson. I am a student at Idaho State University. I'm here to speak today about the killing of Victor Perez and call for a change in the culture of the Pocatello Police Department. After the shooting of Victor, the police chief of the PPD said in justification of the shooting that the risk was imminent. This is a statement that is patently false. As can be verified easily by video footage, at the time of the arrival of the police, Victor was lying on the ground. Guns were drawn on him completely prematurely. He stumbled repeatedly whilst attempting to stand and did not demonstrate any threatening body language. This is not even mentioning the fact that he was behind a four-foot-tall fence. Full stop, Victor did not pose a credible threat to the police. The police are wholly responsible for the escalation of the situation, and the blame is on their shoulders for each of the rounds fired at Victor. The failure, the failure of all four police officers to rationally assess the situation and not just roll in with weapons drawn demonstrates to me and all members of this community that this, that this issue is endemic across the department. It is not acceptable for police to use information from dispatch alone to determine the proper response to a situation. Police officers in this department are clearly not trained to be level-headed, rational, and observant decision-makers. On the contrary, the police demonstrated that they are willing to keep firing in unison at a child who has already fallen to the ground. Further, the immediate actions of the police department after the shooting shows that they are more interested in self-preservation than being arbiters of justice. Therefore, I am calling for the names of the responsible officers to be released to the public, full cooperation with the Idaho Attorney General's investigation, and the firing of all four officers without compensatory pay. Thank you.
Hey, I know, I know that we're passionate, and I'm gonna ask you to please, if you're going to applaud, let's just keep it very, a small applause. I don't typically do that, but I understand we're not at typical times, but we do want to get everybody the opportunity to speak. Maddox? I'm sorry, Maddox, I can't read your last name. If you'd please-
Bigford Thorpe.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maddox Bigford Thorpe. I am a political science student at Idaho State University. Tonight, I want to discuss what happened to Victor and why it's a part of a larger issue and what we must do next. A little bit about me is I'm from the Twin Falls area, and growing up, my dad was a police officer. I was always taught to respect the law enforcement and to understand that they are here to protect and serve, but what happened here is a complete injustice and proves that our police department needs a reform. As we all know, on April fifth, police were called to the house of Victor Perez as there was the possibility of a drunk man with a knife. Victor was behind a chest-high fence, holding a knife, not a gun. And under the Department of Justice, it is specifically stated that police are only supposed to use lethal force when there are no other safe options. That shows that they were not an immediate threat. He was holding a knife, not a gun. They could have easily disarmed him using any other reasonable amount of force. It was also shown that Victor had, was on the autism spectrum and had developmental disabilities. Officers did not try to calm him down or talk to anybody else. They were yelling at him to drop a weapon. If you know anything about autism, loud noises tend to cause them to have even more panic. So I am proposing that we follow in places like Utah and Boise that allow for the police department to work with other mental health organizations to help train officers about mental disabilities and more de-escalation tactics, other than just drawing a gun and shooting. We need to have more ability for our officers to protect us and not just draw a weapon. In twenty twenty-three alone, thirteen people were killed by Idaho police. That was a record high for our state. We need to have more training for the police department for them to help properly protect us.
Thank you. Who signed up after Maddox? Does anybody know?
It was probably me, Vlad.
Probably you?
Yes, correct. Travis Gentry.
Is that Travis? Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Okay, we'll go with it. Come on up here and, your signature is quite frankly worse than mine, so.
Sometimes it is, when you work too much, right?
I hear ya.
State your name for the-
My name is Travis Gentry. I am the security chief over at the warming shelter in Old Town, Pocatello. This, this whole thing with Victor has been really hard on me, especially after losing my mom to COVID recently, not even knowing the family. I am having issues with the fact that I don't believe that the four officers that was involved in the shooting should be getting paid. I'm having a very hard time with that. They're probably at home with their families, you know? I don't, I don't know what's running through their head, but at the same time, I feel it's wrong. I feel, you know, if it, if it was me for myself, I would probably be locked up in, in Boise, Idaho. And I feel for what they did, they should be punished as everybody else should be when it comes to a situation like this. And I just, I feel it's wrong. I feel deeply sorrowed for Victor's family. And I just feel that these officers need to be held very accountable for their actions as to there are other tools that they could have used, in my eyes, to de-escalate the situation. I've raised an autistic child that I found on the freeway a couple, couple years back. I fought in court to get them. I know how difficult they could be at times, but I don't think this was justified. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Erin Renee Leah Vossler. I'm a non-traditional student at ISU. When this first happened, I was just utterly dismayed and appalled. I don't know if I can do this. You can do this, it's okay. The actions taken by the Pocatello Police Department are utterly reprehensible. The situation could have been handled more effectively. It is clear that the officers involved required further training on de-escalation techniques, particularly when dealing with individuals wielding knives. This incident is truly upsetting. Was it really necessary to shoot the sixteen-year-old young man? The Pocatello Police Department should be ashamed of their actions. There were alternative, alternative methods available. They could have used anything. They could have subdued him with their bulletproof vests. They could have. I'm just thoroughly dismayed, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Is that Marty? Okay, I'm gonna try to come back to you. I don't know if it's, it looks like Marty P., but I'm not, I don't know. So we'll come back, maybe.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm gonna keep it short, because a lot of people said what I wanted to say really well, probably better than I could. So I just wanted to let you know that, you probably already know, there's probably a lot of mothers who have autistic children who now have to worry if their children, their autistic children are safe or not. So if, like other people said, if we can just get some training, I know it's gonna cost money, we have to reallocate funds and stuff, but, and work with mental health, I mean, I think that would help go a long way. And also, less lethal means, like, do we have, do they have tasers or bean bags, or what do they have that they can go to before they have to go to deadly force immediately? So, that's all. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rose Idemiller. I hold a master's of social work. Want to read a few statistics first. According to the National Alliance on Mental Health, has February twenty twenty-three, almost half the shootings in the United States involved a person that had mental health issues. It's estimated by the CDC that one in thirty adults in the United States are on the autism John Hopkins states that one in four people in the United States have been diagnosed with a mental health illness. I'm not here to say anything about what happened to Victor, because what I know is you guys could have done, that the police department could have done better, they did with my son. He's on the spectrum. He has bipolar two disorder, he has schizoaffective disorder, and I have called the police to my house to help me when he wanted to kill himself. One out of all the police who came out said, it was my fault. It was my fault that he had the issues he had. And I called the police department the next day and spoke to them about that officer. I called last Monday to the Pocatello Police Department, and I said I wanted to go on register as having a child who has spectrum disorder issues, because I don't want them to shoot if they're called to a domestic disturbance. Nathaniel is med compliant. He knows that if he's not med compliant, he cannot live with us. And yet, yesterday, when I asked him to do something, I had to stand toe-to-toe with him and say, you will do it. You will. And I had to remind him of the consequences. He's a lot bigger than Victor was. He can't meet people's eyes. He feels like he's stealing their souls, if he does. And what does first thing that a police officer looks for? Eye contact. You guys need to remind the people who came out and handled him so well what they should be doing, and it was never to draw a gun.
Thank you. Thank you, Rose. Scott V.
Hello, City Council. My name is Scott Thotter. My thoughts go out to the family of Victor Perez. I do have some concerns. Why did the police department deal the need to place a疏解team on the roof of the peaceful protest? Since when does Pocatello take up precautionary arms against its citizens? Who makes that decision to have a疏解team? What body of law enforcement were they from? And we deserve answers to these questions. Thank you for your time.
Rotten nuts. My name is Matthew Shumway. I'm one of your constituents from Pocatello, and I'm here today to voice my extreme disgust by the very public murder of Victor Perez by the Pocatello Police Department and to advocate for justice for Victor and for his family. The actions of Pocatello Police Department on the fifth of April is a microcosm for numerous social, moral, and constitutional failures perpetuated by Pocatello Police Departments, Bennett County Sheriff's Department, and Idaho law enforcement in general. Victor Perez was a young man, not a man. He was a child. He deserved the dignity to have his civil rights protected, and to his family, I am, I am very sorry. There is no legitimate reason for his murder. It is unacceptable that in a nation and a state, they enumerate the right to keep and bear arms, that, that the presence of a knife or weapon or potential threat or an inebriated individual is right to kill them at the first opportunity. The actions of Pocatello Police Department's actions since his murder are inexcusable. To order a sniper team to go onto a, a government-funded low-income housing at the instance of a First Amendment-protected, very peaceful protest on the side of the road is abhorrent. It is comically evil, and I think we know that those are likely our police departments here in town. If the role of militarized law enforcement is to be the only ones in our culture who get to use violence, they must be able to, must be able to use violence in any type of situation. Police officers represent the state. They have a very serious and important responsibility. As a result, if the role of law enforcement is to be in our communities at all, they must be able to use deadly force as rarely as possible, never as their first option, and to not exist with immunity and the lack of accountability from, from the people whom they are serving. My direct call attached-
Amber Mish Marsh?
Hi, I'm Amber Marsh. I'm sixteen years old, and I am autistic. Pain feels rhythmic if you live in it long enough. If it is said to be a rule you must abide by, pain is rhythm. There is a sweet hum felt through vibrations of stampeded ground. There is a steady flow of carnation red, like an opera's monarchical love affair. Pain is rhythm, when coercion is a concordant strung to civil justice. Like the tragedy spokesperson and lying politician, there's a harmonic impunity that is imbued in democracy. These are lines to a poem I wrote, and I didn't have time to finish it with everything that's been going on, and honestly, truthfully, I don't know how to finish it. It's how I feel, living in this world, being disabled, and how Victor Perez's murder has affected me. I can't put murder into words that are comfortable and familiar, like the sign over there, murder is murder, and it should be taken as such. And my call to action, my demands for the city council, is that the four police officers that murdered Victor Perez are arrested and charged with murder, and also, their names are released to the public. Everyone in the audience that is in support of this, can you give me a little cheer? This is what your community wants. We want justice for Victor Perez, and we demand it, and we won't stop until we get that. Justice needs to prevail, and Victor Perez needs justice. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Amber. I would encourage you to finish the poem when you can. That's a beautiful poem, so thank you. Somebody signed up on this sheet that I can't read your name. Marty? Is it Pence?
My name is Sheena Goldsberry. I have three autistic children, and they have ADHD. And I'm worried about if they have meltdowns, like Victor did, what's gonna happen? Are they gonna get shot, too? I stand against what the police did. I'm mad about it. I'm pissed about it, and I don't think it's fair that everybody in this community has be scared of the Pocatello Police Department about what they did to Victor. And we want justice for the family and for the community. My kids are scared to go to school because of it. He's the same age as Victor. And I really do think that they need to have training, more training on autistic children and disabilities. And if they don't, then they need to be fired and get justice for the murder that they did. It's not fair to every kid in this community to have to be scared. My youngest won't even go to school, because he's scared. And he's severe autistic. And that's messed up. I have only been here six years, and what happened to Victor, I don't want to be in this town no more. So justice needs to be done, and I will protest. I will be out here protesting until something is done. All these people will not stop protesting until it's done. And will continue to come to these meetings and everything and protest for Victor and his family, and every children in this community that has a disability. I will die for my kids. They need justice, too.
Okay, thank you very much. We've gone through every, we've, everybody's had an opportunity to speak. We appreciate you coming tonight. We appreciate, we need to be signed, need to be signed up here. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you for your passion. We all feel the pain. I can assure you, we all feel the pain, and-
I do.
Well, thank you. Thank you. But, but, no, no, I, I, thank you. Thank you.
Have you ever had your face kicked in by police?
All right. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Tonight is, we have a city council member, it's his last meeting, and I wanted to recognize him before we adjourn the meeting. Councilmember Mansfield has served well in-